Okay, good evening and welcome to this evening's Crestwood Board of Education School Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7:38. Ms. Janun, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabal.
Here.
Madam Chair, your quorum.
Thank you. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Janun, Consent Agenda, please.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the Consent Agenda, which include the January 10th, 2022 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, December 6th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, December 6th, 2021, the minutes from the special meeting, Monday, December 13th, 2021, and the check registry dated December 1st through December 31st, 2021. Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I'd like to amend the current agenda and add the settlement agreement as presented by Dr. Masalim.
Support.
We're gonna add it to the Superintendent's Report?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, do you have the wording for that?
I can give you the wording.
Okay, that's fine. We'll wait on that, thank you. All right, and it's supported by Ms.
Elzayat.
Elzayat. Okay, is there, we have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Elzayat for the Consent Agenda. Is there any questions or comments? All those, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now down to the Business Report with Ms. Morgan, Approval of Requisitions.
Thank you. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per Attachment 4A1.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor for Ms. Elzayat with support from Mr. Baydun that the Board of Education approve the requisition per Attachment 4A1. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, Approval of Confirming Purchase Orders. The attached confirming purchase orders are items that needed to be processed prior to the Board approval. The purchases were to re-impose contractual items.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per Attachment 4A2.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor for Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Baydun that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per Attachment 4A2. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Personnel Report, Dr. Lazarus.
Good evening, today we have three action items on our Personnel Report. The first is the appointment of a teacher for physical education at Riverside Middle School, Mr. Nicholas Mardous. Mr. Mardous earned his Bachelor of Arts in K-12 Physical Education with a minor in Secondary Health from Eastern Michigan University. He has experience fulfilling long-term subbing positions as well as serving as a high school basketball head coach. Mr. Mardous believes in building a foundation for students in health and athletics through a focus on proper skills, techniques, and tactics. Mr. Mardous was a student teacher at Riverside Middle School and is excited to be returning to the Crestwood School District.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nicholas Mardous as a physical education teacher for the 2021-2022 school year. According to the CFT Contract BA Step Zero, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See Attachment 5A1.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Janun that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Nicholas Mardous as a physical education teacher for the 2122 school year according to the CFT Contract BA Step Zero, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See Attachment 5A1. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our second action item today is for the appointment of an Assistant Principal for Crestwood High School, Ms. Amanda, and Amanda, if you're listening, please forgive me. Lekaki. Ms. Lekaki did reach out today and said she wished she could make it, but her husband is in the hospital, so she was unable to attend, so she sends her regards. She earned her Bachelor of Science degree and her Master of Arts in Teaching from Wayne State University. She also completed her postgraduate work in K-12 Educational Administration from Michigan State University. Ms. Lekaki has 12 years of teaching experience and has led presentations as part of the After-School PDC Series, PLC, PBIS, Reader's Apprenticeship, PSYOP, and Reading with a Purpose. She has participated in the Aspiring Administrator Program and was selected as High School Teacher of the Year in 2015. Her goal as a leader is to create a strong learning community to support students and to serve as an instructional leader.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Amanda Lekaki as Assistant Principal for the 2021-2022 school year according to the Administrative Agreement Class 1, Step 1, Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law. See Attachment 5A2.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Amanda Lekaki as an Assistant Principal for the 2122 school year according to the Administrative Agreement Class 1, Step 1, Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation as Required by Law. See Attachment 5A2. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third action item is a leave for, request for unpaid leave of absence. Ms. Barbara Jacinski, Highview Elementary School Library Paraprofessional, is requesting unpaid leave for family care from January 12th, 2022 through January 21st, 2022.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Baydun.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the unpaid leave for Barbara Jacinski from January 12th, 2022 through January 21st, 2022.
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Baydun, supported by Ms. Janun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the unpaid leave for Barbara Jacinski from January 12th, 2022 through January 21st, 2022. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Dr. Lazarus. Moving on to Dr. Masalim Superintendent's Report.
Okay, we have three action items, two that I'll start with, the third, which was an amended Agenda action item. The first action item is the Crestwood School District Mission Statement. So the narrative behind this is a mission statement should be one sentence with some specific bullet points for essentials of the mission. It should be easy to remember but strong enough to encapsulate who we are as a district and what we hope to accomplish. Something that we can support and always point to that describes what we are doing and want to do. It is something that we can all believe in. A vision statement should be one sentence that is easy to remember but is strong enough to encapsulate who we are as a district and what we hope to accomplish. Something that we can support and always point to describes who we are and how we will be, how we want to be seen. It is something that we can all believe in. Student, staff, and community surveys were sent out on September 27th, 2021. The top results from each school and the community were shared with the Board in October through a copy and email. Following two action items, the following two action items are to vote for the mission statement and vision statement. So therefore, for the Crestwood School District Mission Statement, these are the top two mission statements that we're requesting the Board to pick one of the top two, one of the two that they can see us move forward with as our mission statement. The first one, 6.a.1.a. is Crestwood Schools celebrate culture and diversity while providing opportunities for success in all student matters, rigor in learning, structure in academic growth, individualization students support, care and social emotional development, and commitment and community involvement. The second of the two to be voted on is Crestwood Schools will ensure that all members of the Crestwood Community receive a rigorous and future-driven learning environment.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Option 6A1 as the Crestwood School District Mission Statement.
It would be 6A1A or B.
6A1A.
Support.
Is anybody in favor?
Who made the motion?
Okay. So nobody, are we gonna?
Support.
We've already got the support, okay.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Baydun that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Option 6A1A as the Crestwood School District Mission Statement. Is there any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, we'll get that going.
Thank you.
The second one is the Vision Statement. These are the top three vision statements, we're asking that the Board choose one. Dream, Believe, Achieve, Crestwood Culture, Where Everyone Matters, and it should be your future, our focus.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Option 6A2C as the Crestwood School District Vision Statement.
A support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Fawaz, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Option 6A2C as the Crestwood School District Vision Statement. Is there any questions or comments? Ms. Janun.
Is it your future, our focus?
Your future, that's the type, it should be.
Was there a, was there a preference? Did, was there like a vote, or those were just the top three? There wasn't like one, I mean?
There was a vote by all those mentioned previously, it was through Google, and those were the top three choices.
Was there one that was like?
No, that's why you receive three instead of just two, because those three were evenly across the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since we're on the topic, how are we spelling your?
Your, like you, not you are. No apostrophe are you.
Your.
Why will you are?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Great question.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam President. Third item for vote, and I will state this slow as you have to write the language down, Madam Secretary. Okay? That the Crestwood School District Board of Education approve the settlement agreement and mutual lease, re-lease.
Mutual?
Re-lease with Best Asphalt as prepared by Trun, which is T-H-R-U-N, Law Firm.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Dr. Masalim.
Yep.
That the Crestwood School Board of Education approve the settlement mutual release with Best Asphalt with Trun, T-H-R-U-N, Law Firm. Is there any discussion? Huh? Yeah, well, any, okay. Who's gonna support it?
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Janun.
Don't, don't one of us have to make the motion and we'll support it?
Yes.
I was a little confused when you said that.
Okay.
I was just reading it to you guys.
I'll make the motion that the Crestwood School District Board of Education approve the settlement agreement and mutual release with Best Asphalt as prepared by Trun Law Firm.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Janun, that the Crestwood School, Crestwood Board of Education approve the settlement mutual agreement with Best Asphalt, Trun Law Firm. Any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, motion carries.
I abstain.
Abstain, we have one abstain.
I also abstain.
Okay, do you wanna take a vote? Ms. Janun.
Mrs. Berry.
I, I, yes.
Mr. Baydun.
Abstain.
Ms. Elzayat.
Yes.
Ms. Fawaz.
Nay.
Myself, yes. Ms. Kaminsky.
Yes.
And Mr. Sabal abstain. Okay, Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Janun. Okay, motion passes. Moving on.
Just have four, four informational items. So special recognition and thanks to the Hamidi Foundation, who donated close to 100 turkeys gift basket, baskets, gifts to students, and gift cards this holiday season to the Crestwood Families. They have been with us, they've been helping us, so we truly do appreciate their support for our families. Crest, we wanna thank the Crestwood, Crestwood Team adopted multiple families for the holiday season, which the Hamidi Foundation helped us support as well, and then Zaman International's partnership with all of our schools to assist families in need. So, I mean, all of our local organizations have come out and really helped their families that were in need. Want to congratulate our athletes at the Wrestling Wayne County Invitational. First place, Anas Shahou, second place, Hamajahfer, and fourth place, Mohakim. Also want to congratulate our Crestwood Esports National Tournament as they came in second place. So they're gonna be going to the Nationals, we're waiting on more information on that. So esports was something that we created last year because it is a growing field, not just in high schools, but in universities and in the public and private sector. You've got 19-year-olds making a lot of money on that stuff, so might as well start helping them out a little bit more. January is Board Appreciation Month, so we don't have much for you this time, but we will have some things for you at the next meeting. We knew this meeting was gonna be a little tight, but we do wanna let the entire community know that January is Board Appreciation Month. So we thank all of our Board members for your tireless work and all that you do. People only may see you in these meetings, but all of you are constantly being bombarded by me as well as, you know, making sure that our students and our faculty and everyone has what they need. So thank you to the entire Board of Education. Monday, January 17th, 2022, is, there are no school, there is no school for students or staff. That is Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, so Monday, January 17th, the district will be closed. And finally, I'm sure is, you know, a topic that many are talking about in terms of COVID. We have been watching the COVID numbers across the district, the county, the city, and COVID, as I sent in the letter to the families today, gave us the proverbial monkey wrench again. This is the first time since we've been going in-person learning where COVID is impacting our staff ability. And when I talk about staffing, the problem is whenever people think about staffing in schools, they only think about teachers. We have to keep in mind, our school district, in order for it to function at a high level of service, doesn't just depend on teachers, but it also depends on our custodial, our maintenance, our food services, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, our administrators, and so many others that support the functioning of our school day. And what COVID has done is it's hit us really hard in our, in our area of staffing across the board holistically, and it has impacted the middle school and the high school the most. So today, with our numbers and the number of staff that are out, it's also, when we talk about COVID, it's not just those that are COVID positive. It's also those that are quarantined because someone in their household has COVID or came in contact with COVID. And when people are in quarantine, there are different guidelines for quarantine. For say, for example, if you are vaccinated, your number of quarantine days are less if you're unvaccinated. If you were exposed, were you exposed with a mask on or were you exposed with a mask off? There are many different stipulations that goes off into different areas. And it is harder for us to go and make these decisions, because I can tell you that from 9:00 AM, every morning, my routine is very simple. 6:00 AM, I look at the COVID numbers, this is every day. From 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, every day, I'm reviewing COVID numbers, I'm looking at statistics, I'm talking with our school nurse, I'm having conversations with administration. I am identifying where are we with COVID. Today was a day when I looked at our staffing and had conversations with all the same people I have been having conversations with. Since we started school, pre-Labor Day, today was the first time that I could say COVID has negatively impacted our staff, we're in the middle school and the high school. We have to make this decision to go virtual until the end of this week, where students will return in person on Tuesday, January 18th. And this is due to staffing shortages. Last piece I'd like to discuss in terms of commentary is, you know, during this time and since we were in virtual, before we returned to in-person and all the way through in-person, I want to reiterate that our school social workers, our school psychologists, our teachers, our counselors are available for anyone that needs support. One of our commitments as a team has been that we were going to invest in social emotional learning, which we have, and it's paying dividends. Usually, when people think of social workers or school psychologists, they think of someone who has specific or identifiable needs. That is not the case. Social workers, school psychologists, and counselors, and our school administrators are available for anyone. If you're struggling with the winter blues, because that is a tough thing. If you're struggling with COVID, if you're struggling with what is school gonna be like tomorrow? If you're struggling with somebody bullying you or you don't know how to handle a situation, we have staff available. And I can tell you, as a Board and to the community, that many parents and students have been utilizing the staff we have available. But I want everyone to understand, there is no negative stigma if you reach out to the school and say, I need to talk to someone. Even as a parent, because if we don't have the services, we will find the services for you. We will not tell you, go here or go there. We will find for you what you need, and we will have them come to you. We have probably made more home visits this year than our district has made in many years. But we don't flaunt it. We don't go out and say, we did that, it's not anybody's business. But it is everyone's business to know that we have people here to support you. Doesn't matter how old you are, doesn't matter who you are, and it is completely confidential. And I'm gonna use a word, there is no jarras. There is no embarrassment when you ask somebody for help. That's what we're here for. We're one community, we're strong, we're together. And finally, I'd like to say something. I talked to trustee Kaminsky this week, and I'm sorry trustee Kaminsky, I'm gonna throw you out on this, because I wanted to reach out there to have a conversation real quick about something. We were just talking about numbers and stuff, and I just wanted to put her at ease because she was worried about something. And she said to me, I was wrong. My response to trustee Kaminsky is, it's not about right or wrong. It's not about who's right or who's wrong. It's about having the conversation because we're all doing what we believe needs to be done in the best interest of all. I'm not perfect, as no one here is perfect. But if we all understand we're not perfect, and we all understand that the people you have in this district that are looking out for our children, our people that are from this district, that are from this community, that are from our Dearborn Heights, Dearborn background, we're in this together, and we will continue to be in this together, and we'll continue to move forward. That's my commentary, Madam President, I turn it back over to you, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments, Ms. Janun, if you could please read the statement.
One second.
Yes, go ahead.
Were we gonna talk about board terms?
Uh, Ms. Janun brought that up.
Okay.
I was just asking if it was on this.
It was on the study session agenda, I didn't know what it was about, that's all.
Okay, let's do that after public comments.
Okay.
Okay, public comments, Ms. Janun.
This meeting, this meeting of the Board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student names, student or staff names. In order to permit a fair allotment of time, speakers, to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The President may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to a half hour is provided for public input. Direct all questions to the Board President.
Okay, Mr. Hamad Jani, if you could please come up to the podium. Good evening.
Hamad Jani, I'm a resident of Dearborn Heights, been so for the last 15-plus years. First, I'm amazed at where we've come to from my many visits in the past, and congratulations to all the new Board members and the Superintendent, Chairwoman, we go back many, many years. Glad to see the community diversification that's now on this Board. It pleases me immensely. Now, the reason why I'm here is a delicate matter, and I'm gonna segue with the Superintendent so eloquently described as we're all in this together. And my concern and a topic dear and near to my heart is a crosswalk. Crosswalk that is very much needed through speaking to and through members of the City Council and some of the Board members here. The crosswalk from Beach Daily to Crestwood. I've had very deep conversation with Councilman Dave Abdullah, and he's reached out to the county, to the city, and so on and so forth. I understand that the City Council and the School Board are two separate bodies. And I'm coming to you folks tonight, and as many nights as I need to, to express the concern that a lot of parents have that the kids are crossing the street. And I'm gonna tell you a horrific story, but ended on a good note. Is my son was going across the street, and he was hit by a car. The young lady wasn't paying attention. Thank God, it wasn't anything detrimental. He rolled off, he was more frightened of probably people paying attention to him and the attention he might have gotten, so he got back on his bike and he went to football practice anyways. I didn't know about this, obviously, until he came home. Well, as any parent, regardless of him coming home safe and sound, it was, it's at least, at least scary in my mind. And all of you who have parents, all of you that are parents, obviously will understand this. So the crux of this is, we need to try to figure something out. And in doing so, some of the conversation I had with Councilman Abdullah was, and I suggested this to him, and he says, yeah, well, financially, it's not doable. It's just, it's just not doable. So the next suggestion I said to him, I says, okay, why can't we go back to old school? Old school is, my suggestion is, crosswalk. Uh, what are they, I forgot what they're called.
One more minute, Mr. Jani.
Um, crossing guards, very good. Can I get an extension, is that?
Ms. Berry extended it.
Okay.
Yes, I extended it.
Um, so why can't we get cross, crossing walks, whether it's parent participation, school participation, however it can be done? If it can't be done because of the financial end of it, volunteers maybe could happen. We're only talking, I believe, one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon. And to have old school days when probably we all went to school, they have the crosswalk patrol, or the safety patrol, I think that's what it was called, a safety patrol. Why can't we do something like that, just to slow down traffic, to make sure these kids cross the street? You know, it's hard to go to Ford Road, it's hard to go to, um.
Wilson.
Wilson, thank you. So can't we come together and try to figure something out through the School Board? Try to make something happen sooner than later, before some tragedy really occurs? What, what does everybody think? What, what does everybody think?
Um, I know that this has been an ongoing discussion. I don't know if you, um, have had any feedback from.
I haven't had any specific feedback, but it is an ongoing conversation to put an additional light there with the crossing area and having somebody man it.
So do we need to reach out maybe to our commissioner?
That's who I'm speaking with.
Okay.
I'm already in conversation with.
In the meantime, is, is doing the crosswalk thing a viable solution in between or why we're waiting? Because I know, come on, we know logistically, this is going to take years.
With, without a light and just so you know, without a light, it's a very dangerous position to put anyone in to stand there in the dark. We have to have a light there and that's where we're trying to get, that's what we're trying to get.
Crosswalk light?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because just to put somebody out there.
What about in the afternoon?
It's, it's still even then, because it's not, it's not patrolled. It's not, and the police are there sometimes to help, but we have no way of slowing somebody down from a distance. They wouldn't see somebody standing there with a stop or yield sign until they get too close. That's where our concern is right now.
You'd also need the road markings, Mr. Jani, uh, the lines. And that, that's the city more so than it is us, because I 1,000% agree with you. I live in the same neighborhood as you and my kids cross that same street.
Yeah.
So I'm 100% behind you. Uh, we just got to do it the right way and it's, it is two bodies and I know Dr. Masalim's been speaking to them and we're all behind it. I can tell you I am at least, so.
We're trying to expedite it, just so you know, we are trying to expedite.
Has there been any moves, any movement at all?
Yes, yes.
Has there?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
Yes.
Okay.
There has. I have, I have open dialogue and we're just trying to expedite it right now.
Any, any chance you'll share?
I don't have any specific dates that I can give you because I don't want to be held to those specific dates.
Right, but we can advise him to reach out to his commissioner and see what, um.
That, that is who I'm speaking with.
Yeah, but he can also reach out if he hears from the community. Um, he's a good listener.
So our commissioner is David Kenezak.
Okay. Ms. Azayat, did you have a question?
Well, I just, to your point about, um, when we used to have safety patrol. So safety patrol was only allowed to be assigned at stop signs. And this is the same concept where a crossing guard, we'd be putting somebody's life at risk as the crossing guard to try to stop oncoming traffic so kids could cross. You know, that's, that's just because I, I, the concept is great. It sounds great. It sounds, and I know in your mind, you're thinking, oh, well, it's easy. Let's just put somebody out there to start crossing them and before we can get the light and, and the plans in place, but we can't do that without, we'd be, actually the district would be putting somebody's life at risk by having them out there crossing kids where there's no light.
If I came across that I'm trying to make it sound easy, no, that wasn't my intention. I apologize.
No, no, no. I'm saying that.
But what I'm, I'm.
For in the meantime.
Right. So again, I'm, because I still have younger children at home and there's, and they still go to Crestwood. I have three kids going to Crestwood. And I still have another one coming up. So this, and I brought it up before most of you are on this board.
I was on it.
Okay. Nadi and I were in the audience at the time. So,
The good old days.
This has been an ongoing multi-year conversation. And, you know, until my son recently got hit, I really wasn't paying attention again. I lost, lost it, but now I'm back on track and I'm getting the conversations going.
What, what I can say is everyone is amicable to it. And I assure you, it will be done. I can't give you a timeline, but I can assure you it'll be done.
And there's nothing that we can possibly do. I understand. Makes sense. There was stop signs. Um, I don't know. Like we have certain times you can get into the parking lot, you can go right, you can go left. Is there certain times that stop signs are, can be put up temporarily, used, anything? Is there anything that can be done intermittently to the whole process of going through?
I, I can have that, uh, I can have, continue that conversation with the traffic division to see what they can do.
Or even, I don't know if it's possible, officers with their, with their, um, let's say their police lights on for that hour, not, you know, just making cars aware. I don't know.
No, I mean,
Something.
It is part of the conversation. It's just hard to get somebody to stand out there each day for an hour before or after from the police department.
I don't mean, I'm just having their, their cars on with the, with the lights flashing.
I can have that conversation with them.
What about our resource officer, Dr. Masalim?
Our resource officer is not guaranteed he'll be available every morning and every afternoon because if something comes up.
Gotcha. I, I, I don't know if Mr. Jani has done that, Madam Chair, but I have a question for the superintendent.
I, I just wanted you to know, I think every board member is totally in agreement. When you first came to the board, I think it was five years ago, if I'm not mistaken, um, and brought this up. Was it more than that?
Probably honestly, uh, I'm going to say eight, eight to 10 years ago.
Uh, well, then that was before me, but you came back again on this.
I'm always coming back.
And we did have the police do a traffic.
Yeah, that's correct.
And quite frankly, and I'm not placing blame anywhere, that was a previous administration and I think they failed to follow through. I, I never heard a report on what the outcome was. So I apologize on that.
Thank you for remembering. I mean,
I, I do remember when you came.
Like I said, it just got rekindled because of what happened to my son.
I would say it would rekindle me too.
Yeah. Um, thank you for listening and I'll be hopeful to hear updates sooner than later.
You will.
But I, I would give Mr. Kenezak a call.
Well, he, he's on board. He, he's on board. I don't want you to, he, he's on board.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It sounds like the superintendent is, is.
I just don't want anybody to think that Mr. Kenezak's not on board. He's 100.
No, we know.
I want everyone to know he's 150% on board and he is a strong supporter of the Crestwood schools and Annapolis and Robishaw. And he's willing to do whatever is necessary for our community.
He's a Crestwood grad in 2004.
Is there anything I or any of the parents? Because I am speaking on behalf of some of the parents that live on this.
If we hit a roadblock, if we hit a roadblock, I will 150% reach out to you and say, I need some parent support.
Okay.
But even if we don't hit a roadblock, once I have further information, of course I will update the board, but I also will update you.
Great. Any updates would be greatly appreciated on the parent's side.
You got it. I have your number.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next we have, um, Ms. Kita Samad.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you all for everything you do on a daily basis. Um, also to reflect back on Dr. Masalim saying, um, speaking about the support system that we have here um, in the district, I will say I've definitely used the resources here at Riverside and everyone is amazing. Um, my son has come a long, long way. I don't even want to get into that because then I'll get emotional. But, um, from restorative practices to social workers, to just everyone. It, it's amazing. The new counselors, um, our principal, assistant, I could go on and on. Definitely a huge change. Amazing. We're blessed. Our district is moving forward.
Thank you.
Um, so this evening, I just wanted to share my experience with, um, last week. I received a call on Wednesday from, I have three children in the district. I received a call on Wednesday from my son that, um, is at Crestwood. He's a junior. And he says, Mom, I've been exposed. They're telling me I have to go home. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Well, I had just started a new job, so it was a quick call. Mom, I need your authorization. They need you to say, yes, I could drive home. So that was quick. So I said, we'll bring home the information and we'll go over it to see what the quarantine policy looks like. He comes home, um, well, I get home, he's like, Mom, they said I can go back tomorrow, which is Tuesday. And then he says, but that don't make sense because they gave me this sheet. And this sheet had different options on there. So I went through the options and let me tell you, this son of mine is all accelerated classes and he's OCD about his school. So for him, he's never missed a day of school ever and he's a junior. So this is like crazy for him. So I said, okay, well, don't worry. Here's this option. You could test for seven days. Um, as long as there's no symptoms, we could go back. He says, Mom, but she said I can only come back on Tuesday. I said, well, let's just make a call. I make a call to the office. The young lady, they answered. I asked to speak to the person that discharged my son. I, um, she said, no, just have him follow what she told him. I said, well, I have this here that I could choose from. According to this, he'll be back tomorrow. As long as we get the negative test that it's requesting daily. And she says, no, ma'am, you need to follow what she said. I said, okay, hold on a minute here. So I started to put an email together to the board or Dr. Masalim, Dr. Lazar. Um, and then I said, wait, let's see. And then shortly after, I receive an email saying with all the high numbers, your child is to remain home seven to 10 days and come back with a negative test. I said, okay. So I get a call from Riverside that my other son was exposed. Okay, here we go. So I didn't get the call. Dad got the call on that one. And, um, he was sent home. I said, okay, well, what was, what, what did they say to you? And he said something about seven to 10 days. I called the office and I'm like, this is my son that, uh, online is not going to work for him. Um, I just, we just got him to where he's excelling amazingly.
We're going to extend it for two minutes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Um, so, uh, so he's excelling and for him to be out of school seven to 10 days, that's drastic for him. So I called the office and I said, what if I get him tested daily? He's okay with it. We're okay with it and he comes back with no symptom. They denied that. They said, no, ma'am, he has to stay. So that's fine. I contacted the social worker. That was a no-go. Okay. So then I have the third child in the school. She's still coming to school. So it's across the board. It's just not making sense. This is final time as well. Students need to be where they're in connection. He is able to reach out. Um, but like I said, my Riverside one, this, here you go, here's your assignments. That's not going to work for him. So I mean, our children are exposed. They work outside of school. Their employment, their employers request if they're not vaccinated, they get tested once a week. If there's no symptoms, it's fine for them to be at work. I mean, I feel like we need to really get this cleared up because what if we go again and they're, they're in sports, they're in extracurricular activities? When, it, it just seems like not everyone's on the same page. And is this quarantine process, should we have the option of daily testing? And if it's negative to come back? I'm, I'm really.
So, so if I may, Madam Chair, I, I, if I can ask, if you give Dr. Lazar your information, Dr. Lazar will give you a call tomorrow to go through because I, we'd like to know where there was a breakdown, if there, if there, you know, what's happening. So also, so we can correct if we need to correct anything.
Okay.
Um, and again, as I mentioned earlier, based in every situation, we're following M D H A S. It says, if this happens, you do this. If this happens, you do this. So every case is different. But I can say that in this meeting, I did receive an alert that some of this criteria is going to change even again. And up until this new change in the criteria, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services had, and I don't know what the changes are because I really didn't look into it because we're in the meeting. I just got the alert. But the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they had a different expectation of quarantine and so on and so forth for public schools than they did for the private community. So that's what confuses a lot of people too. But if you can please give Dr. Lazar your information, Dr. Lazar will reach out to you in the morning. We'll clarify all that. And then if we see anywhere we need to, uh, fix anything on our end, we will as well and we'll keep you posted. I'm sorry that.
Yeah, no, it was just frustrating. I got three different, and I'm like, okay, where do we go here?
Yeah, no, no. I, I totally understand that frustration and, and, and you bringing it to our attention helps us get better as well.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for bringing that to us. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address that real quick.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Ryan Ferencia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm here to give you some really, really good news. But before I do that, I just have some background to talk about. On November 30th, for sure, there was a shooting in Oxford High School. And shortly after that, many schools took to analyzing what they could do to lower the risk of this happening in their school districts. Shortly after the shooting, attorney Jeffrey Feiger became the main attorney who, the main attorney of record who filed a hundred million dollar lawsuit against teachers, principals and the superintendent. His lawsuit was listed today on clickondetroit.com. And it showed that they have a 107-page report with 410 charges. Unbelievable. On December 6th, the principal, the superintendent and several principals gave an excellent extensive report concerning what they were prepared to do before and after a lockdown. So why is all this good news? So what I would do is I would consider taking, taking, reading this 107-page, 107-page report, combining that with your recent recommendations of the superintendent and principals to see, to see where you could improve what you're about to put in place to mitigate any future lockdowns and especially lower the risk of being sued, which is the most important. Because they want to actually sue the superintendent, principals, teachers, uh, even probably board members, which had nothing to do with it. It's a shame. But that's, that's something to consider. The, this click on, click on Detroit.com, that was posted just today. So tomorrow, the URL may be, may be eliminated. So tonight, when you go home, I'd recommend getting on this clickondetroit.com. Find where it has a little story about Oxford and there's a, there's a PDF file of all 107 pages. So that would be of interest. Also, the sheet I just passed out, I would consider also, uh, passing out my flyer to all middle and high school students to fill out and return to their teachers. All teachers, all teachers should review the answers given and pass on the answers to the school nurse, counselors, principals for further review. This is another way to lower the risk of being sued. With the sheet I just passed out, the top line is for the student's name. Underneath, that's the address. And Y P, that's your phone and then father's phone at work and mother's phone at work. And this was really just an open-ended quest, open-ended series of questions that you could spot, hopefully, students that may be causing some trouble in the near future. And the last thing, and that's, and there's, it's front and back. And the last thing is back in October, I mentioned this movie, Social Dilemma. I would consider showing that movie, Social Dilemma, in your auditorium. I would invite students and parents, send home a flyer with this invitation, including general statements by the superintendent concerning what the movie is all about and the effects on their children's social platforms. Have parents call the school to reserve a seat at the showing and this is another way to remove, to, to reduce your being sued. Because that would be really bad. Even if, even if you had the showing and you only had one person show up, doesn't matter. You did something to reduce your risk of being sued. Any questions?
You always bring great information and honestly, I appreciate it. Um, I, I don't know what, you, you said, what was the name of the?
Yeah, the website is at clickonDetroit.
Oh, it was on clickonDetroit.
Yeah, clickonDetroit.
The name of the, the movie, yeah.
Well, that movie was called The Social Dilemma. You would probably get on, it's on YouTube.
It's on Netflix too.
And that's like a 90, 90 Netflix movie.
It was actually. Yep, it was actually quite disturbing, but yes.
It was.
It was disturbing.
It was.
But thank you.
Because, because parents, because on this 410 charges, they actually talked about. What, what the superintendent, teachers and principals, not only what they did, what they didn't do. So I would incorporate a lot of what they're saying into your report and you would have a, a good basis to defend yourself when this, when this hopefully. Doesn't happen, but it probably will.
Okay, Dr. Masal, you received a copy of this, right?
I have.
Yeah, so I'm sure the social workers, if you could pass that on to them and then, thank you, we appreciate it.
Question.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, definitely.
Can I just mention one thing about the one fellow about the crossing?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I saw what was interesting is, you know, you couldn't really have a speed bump over there to, to, to make cars slow down. But what some company came up with a way to have what they call like a 3D, uh, speed bump. And if you notice, like, the keys on a, on a piano are like white, black, white, black, white, black. Well, the white, there's like a white, uh, line and the black looks like a shadow and then a white and a black shadow and a white and a black shadow. And it looks like it's a speed bump, but it's actually perfectly flat. And what you do is you just paint that on the street and people think, oh, oh, I'm having the speed bump, I better slow down. It's an optical illusion.
Thank you.
Consider.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Okay, moving on, any board comments? Ms. Seba? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, talking to me?
Yeah, Mr. Seba, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Dr. Masal, I, I do have a question, a follow-up question, it's something that was brought up some time back. And it's around the, uh, the traffic at the high school in the morning. And I know you had talked to the director of the, the traffic division for the city. Uh, for the police department, I'm sorry. There are people turning left off of northbound beach daily into the school and just holding up traffic. I mean, it's just, it's pretty ugly in the morning. I live right here. And I head out pretty early and every single day I just hope that nobody gets hit by a car because there are kids crossing to Mr. Janney's point. And we've got people creating traffic jams with the left turns and all the illegal turns out of the school too, at that, or the ones that are making a right and turning around in somebody's driveway. Creating a backup there too. It's just so dangerous and I know people are trying to cut a few minutes off, off their schedule because they're in a hurry. But they're putting our kids' dangers and lives, uh, their, their, our kids' lives in danger, excuse me. I just, I need to know if the police department is on this because since you and I spoke, I'm every single morning, I'm there. And honestly, I haven't seen a police car in a long time.
So last week or the week before, I don't remember, I have to go back and look at my text messages. Uh, usually when the chief has someone out there, he'll shoot me a text and say, we're gonna have somebody out there today if you get any complaints. And I know last week or the week before, they passed out several tickets, uh, to individuals that were. Uh, turning illegally or doing different things. I've seen our SRO pull some people over as well a couple of times when I was there. Um, I will reach out again, uh, to Dearborn High Police and ask them if they can ramp it up on a more of a regular basis, I'm sure they can help us out. But I do know they've been out there sporadically, um, but I do know it hasn't been on a daily basis.
Let me make this very clear, I'm not looking for people to get tickets. But if that's what's gonna happen, then what needs to happen in order for these kids to be safe? Then that's what needs to happen. To anybody out there listening, please. Tell your children if they're going to school, if they're going to park in the parking lot there, don't make that turn.
No, no, I agree.
Don't turn out of there, it's just so dangerous.
I, I agree with you 100%. I'll reach out in the morning and see if we can have some additional presence on a more of a regular, steady basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it? Mr. Seba?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch up on that from our earlier thing.
Okay, Ms. Fawaz, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone, our community and everybody. Um, hopefully we all are staying safe and although we're not, you know, most people are not happy about going, uh, virtual, I think it is the safest. Uh, route for our staff and our children. Also, I hope, um, a lot of the parents and community were really listening to Dr. Masal. And speaking about the social, uh, the social and so, social workers and, um, you know, and, and take advantage if they are really, uh, in, in need. Um, or have any problems and really take advantages of the resources that the school has. Um, so again, I, I, I hope you guys, um, listen, really listen to that and, you know, use it if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baydun?
I just want to say Happy New Year and welcome back, uh, hope everyone had a pleasant break. Um, again, stay safe and be well and continue to take precaution. I know a lot of us. Sometimes get comfortable and leave our guards down, but please continue to mask up around the children as well. Um, and, uh, we'll get through it together.
Thank you. Ms. Janun?
Couple of things, um, first of all, I know we were supposed to have train on this, um, on this agenda, will they be coming?
I believe we rescheduled that for February because we were so far behind in all our agenda items.
Okay, um, I was wondering, as Ms. uh, as Kita had mentioned about daily testing. I don't know how we're gonna ever, how we're gonna get past this because we're constantly, you know, like, as she said, being exposed. And I think at this point, we need to come up with a solution to keep the kids in school. I know nobody wants us, I know everybody wants everybody in school, nobody wants anybody home and quarantining. Um, but I understand that a lot of it is from exposure or potential exposure and that's why. People are home and quarantining or isolating for so many days. I know other districts are doing it and I know it's not an easy, I know it's not an easy task to do, but I, I just feel like. How are we going to keep them in school safely, but keep them in school? I know that the state is offering tests and it's not at a cost.
Not necessarily. They're saying it, but we're not getting it, first and foremost. There's a lot of talk out there.
Yeah.
That is throwing, that's throwing us districts and superintendents and boards under the bus, that's one of them. They've been telling us, we're gonna get you kits, we signed up for them, the minute it came out, haven't heard anything. They told us they're gonna get you testing, we signed up for it, minute it came out, we have not received a thing. They actually came back to us and asked us to return all of our testing kits so that they can redistribute them, we haven't seen them. Additionally, not everyone, according to the guidelines, can be tested daily if exposed to stay in school, only some kids can. So there, it's, it's, there's a lot of things out there that don't make sense. Now, there has, there is an update, I'll be getting more details on that update, I've already shared with the board, the preliminary of that update. Once we have more details from our school nurse, who she will call directly and get it from, from the horse's mouth to say. We'll share that with the community too. I understand the frustration people are having. As much as people are having this frustration, realize our frustrations are 10 times more than through the roof. Because again, like today, I spent six hours dealing with COVID. Instead of going into classrooms and working with teachers and meeting with kids. So I hear you, Trustee Janun, I hear the community, I'm with you. But the information that is shared publicly is not what's actually always happening. And that's what our problem is. I, I, it's just, it's our frustration. For every parent that's frustrated, please know. We're frustrated tenfold. I have four kids, my kids are going to school, my kids are masking up. I say that on purpose because of the fact that I'm not just making these decisions because it's for me. But it's also, I'm thinking about the children, I, I am. And if the state would just, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it again. Start respecting our teachers, start respecting our educators, not you, I'm talking about the state and the feds. Start respecting these people that have four, six, 10-year degrees, they're very intelligent, that work their tails off. That put themselves in harm's way during this entire COVID situation so kids could learn. Until our politicians put our educators on the front as the most important people of our nation and our communities. We're gonna continue to be villainized, villainized as those that don't want to do and finding excuses to get out. I'm not saying you, Trustee Janun, I'm talking about the state, I'm talking about the state and the feds, I'm using this as a stand, as a soapbox.
We obviously can't do this without our teacher and our, teachers in our state.
100%, and I'm not saying you, I'm talking about the state and I'm talking about the feds.
I was under the impression that it was an option for us and that's why.
It's an option if you have the kits and for specific individuals. It's not an option for everyone. Now, will that change? I'm telling everyone right now, it is going to change.
It's, it's changed.
But until I get the actual verbiage, I, I'm not going to send that out or say anything in this meeting. Unless I know for a fact, because I'm gonna tell you something. When the CDC changed the guidelines, we got so excited. But then we found out M D H A S S was not gonna change the guidelines.
Yeah.
So again, until I have it in an official email from an official person, that's officially, this is what it is. I'm gonna stick to what we got.
Okay, which I completely understand and.
Thank you, no, I just, I, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Kaminsky, anything?
Um, I don't think so, I'm gonna reiterate Happy New Year to everybody and to my fellow board members and administration and. Um, that's it for tonight.
Elzayet?
Um, same as everyone, Happy New Year. Dr. Masal, I did, uh, have a follow-up or.
Yes.
Maybe just a suggestion, uh, for, for parents who are getting mixed information about what they should do if their child is. Exposed, if they have to quarantine, if they test positive or negative in the days. We know that the information is fluid, we know it's moving every hour, I would say, not even every day. Maybe we can just, uh, put a number on that sheet where if they're unsure, kind of like a hotline, call, call this number. And then, um. I also suggest signing, assigning a person in each building to be like the COVID. Uh, person with the COVID answers and then those people at each building can talk and be on the same page. So every building is sending out the same message to parents, just so the parents aren't confused. As much as we can, I'm just, just a suggestion.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Elzayet, um, I just want to reiterate, it's the importance of staying safe, masking up. Um, doing what you have to do to, you know, to keep your family safe. Um, that's the only way we will be getting back, you know, to school full-time. Um, and yes, the rules are changing as we sit here. So, um, hopefully we'll have more information for you. Um, and hopefully we can get the students back into the buildings as soon as possible. Um, and with that being said. We have a motion to adjourn at 8:40 from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Janun, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you and good night, everybody.